Good morning. It is 10:00 AM on August 15, 2023. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So moved.
Second, moved and seconded. Headens.
Aye.
Faisal, aye. Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the table. And seeing no one raise their hand or come forward, we'll close public comment number one and move to consideration of proclamation recognizing August 2023 as Water Quality Month in Story County. And Supervisor Headens, would you like to read it?
Sure. Whereas National Water Quality Month is dedicated to protecting bodies of clean water such as lakes, rivers, groundwater, aquifers, and streams. And whereas clean water is essential to our health, agricultural needs, and our environment. And whereas implementing conservation practices in urban and rural areas can improve soil health and water quality. And now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Conservation Board and the Story County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim August 2023 as Water Quality Month in Story County. To protect our waters for years to come, we encourage everyone to continue best practices like picking up after pet, disposing of chemicals correctly, and using the right amount of fertilizer. I move the proclamation.
Second, Headens.
Aye.
Faisal, aye. And I believe we have a picture, right? Yeah, that'd be cool.
That would be a fun picture.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
We have no agency reports this morning. Consideration of minutes from August 8.
Uh, move, I move approval of minutes as presented.
Second, Headens.
Aye.
Faisal, aye. Consideration of personnel actions.
I move approval of personnel actions as listed.
Second, Headens.
Aye.
Faisal, aye. Consideration of claims.
I move approval of claims as presented.
Second, Headens.
Aye.
Faisal, aye. Consent agenda.
I move approval of consent agenda items as listed.
Second, Headens.
Aye.
Faisal, aye. We have no public hearing items today. Additional items, we have discussion and consideration of requests from the city of Huxley and the amount of $50,000 for the proposed splash pad project. Would you like to move, come forward to the table? Both of you? Moral support counts. So now I'll just have, have you make sure that you're speaking directly into the microphone. You're going to sound really loud to yourself, but you're not going to be loud on the recording.
I'm actually just the, uh, the face here. Um, I'm going to let Jonathan France speak. He, he called in on Zoom.
Okay, fantastic. He's the brains.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, hi Jonathan.
Excellent. Thank you. Hi. Uh, can I proceed?
Yes, please do.
Fantastic. Well, good morning and thank you for having us today, uh, both virtually and in person. We really appreciate you taking the time to hear this project and our story. As Susan introduced, I am Jonathan France and I come to you as a citizen of Huxley, a resident there at 309 North Second Avenue. A business owner, uh, with, with Susan, a co-owner of Fence Line Beer Lab Restaurant and Brewery. A co-founder of the nonprofit Friends of Huxley, whose mission is to improve the lives and livelihood of Huxley residents. And as a volunteer for the Parks and Recreation Department Board. Susan is also a volunteer for the Planning and Zoning Committee. We've only been in the community a short time, but we've established roots and are pursuing a future.
Jonathan, I, I apologize. Um, you're kind of fading in and out. Um, I don't know if you're on a headset or, um, but if you could, if you could move it more directly uh, in front of your, your mouth, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Okay, okay. And please, um, let me know if it fades out again.
Okay, will do. Thanks.
Okay. So we're here today to talk about a project to build a splash pad for the community and to request your support. The splash pad will be the city's first water-centered recreational feature. And will be built to accommodate the 20% of Huxley residents aged 15 and lower. 20%. That number alone tells you a lot about Huxley. And the challenges that young families face in choosing what to do when kids are out of school. The splash pad provides a destination, helps create healthy habits to play outside when people are young. And walk or ride their bikes to a safe, community-focused play area that welcomes everyone. Yes, we envision no fees to enjoy this feature, so no service fee to participate in the splash pad. There are opportunities around to play in water in Slater, Ames, and Ankeny, but all require driving and all require a fee. Not a whole lot of 15-year-olds can drive or have jobs to pay those fees. And of course, all of those opportunities take people out of the community of Huxley. Now, the location is fantastic. Uh, Susan has some handouts. Um, I think she's given, yep, she's nodding. The location is fantastic. The site sits on a portion of Park, uh, North Kelsom, that is currently empty and along Main Avenue. That's, that park is surrounded by family homes and apartments. It's within walking, excuse me. It is within walking distance to City Hall, Three Seas Community Center, the Huxley Public Library, Ballard High School and Middle Schools, Historic Downtown, two other city parks, the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail. And the best part of the location is that four childcare centers are within walking distance of that, that site. So it really is the perfect location for a splash pad. The splash pad itself is smartly designed. It's a recirculating park that operates at under 250 gallons per minute, but all that water is recirculated. It has access for all abilities, zones within it, targeting different age users, the control building for mechanical equipment, and an outdoor shower. The footprint is large and accommodating for those different age zones. Uh, the whole pad is 75 feet by 58 feet. The features themselves can be installed and replaced or moved around to allow for an evolution of features and changes over time to allow, uh, different visions into the future. We believe the community wants this. In early 2022, a survey was made for Huxley residents and in the yes/no question of if Huxley needed a public swimming or water facility. 70% of those respondents said yes. 60% of the respondents indicated that they believe that the Huxley parks currently do not have features that they want. While 35% of residents indicated that they actually leave the community to seek out those features from other communities. This splash pad helps address acknowledged gaps in our parks' features and will keep more residents enjoying the opportunities locally. We also bet that others outside of the Huxley community will come to take advantage of this feature. So how are we going to get this built? You have two other handouts that illustrate what we're doing and what the targets are. Fundraising really was kicked off by a Craig Tool gift to the city a couple of years ago for the park, and this summer, community-level fundraising has continued that effort. Those efforts have really been diverse, from direct contributions and sponsorships, which you can see on the flyer, for businesses and other nonprofits like the Huxley Historical Society. There's a personalized brick paver program, a T-shirt drive that shows Huxley zip code under an Iowa map. Uh, Susan's actually modeling that shirt today.
Oh, cool.
There's a penny wars competition from the different childcare providers, a contribution per pint from a special beer at Fence Line, door-to-door awareness. All of these efforts have been effective and show the community level passion for this project. Commitments continue to come in, but counting only the money in hand, we have raised just over $403,000. So what's the goal? The goal of the overall project is 740,000.
I'm sorry, we couldn't hear the goal. You faded again.
$740,000 is the overall goal. That's reflected in one of the handouts that Susan has given. There's a trigger point at $540,000. That's also reflected in the handout. Once we reach that trigger point, we can start constructing and have a fully functioning splash pad with minimal features. So the goal overall is 740. The minimized, uh, trigger point for construction is 540. So with 403,000 in hand, reaching those goals does require us to seek grant funding. We've identified the Iowa CAT grant for a planned request of $150,000. The due dates on these, there's four of them throughout the year, I believe. One is actually today. We're not going to heap at that one, but the next one is, uh, I believe October. Susan, yeah?
November.
November, okay.
15.
November 15. To achieve that request, we're asking this body for a contribution of $50,000 that we can use in addition to the already contributed funding as match to seek that CAT funding. As you know, we need a commitment from the supervisors in order to be eligible to apply for these state funds. We're grateful that the city of Huxley has also committed to ongoing maintenance and upkeep once the park is built and opened. So we don't need to worry about that portion. They've committed the, uh, labor and the chemical equipment to run, maintain, and repair anything that's going on with the splash pad. So we're really looking only for the construction costs. That's pretty much it. Uh, we, we want to express our appreciation for your time this morning, listening to, uh, me describe this project and funding request. I'll happy to answer any questions that you may have. Uh, Susan and Dave are there as well to answer any other questions. At this point, uh, who has the first question?
Uh, this is Supervisor Headens, and I do have a question. Um, so are you looking with the CAT grant to apply for the rest of the need? You have the 403,000 and your goal is 750. Sorry, are you looking for that grant to bridge that gap? I see some heads shaking here in the room.
No, it's going to be 150,000.
Okay.
For the CAT.
So we continue to raise funds from the community to fully bridge the gap in addition to that grant funding, and we're seeking other grants as well. For example, the Story County Community Foundation is one source that we're also applying for.
And we will be submitting that in September or by September.
I don't have any other questions.
Um, and this is Supervisor Faisal. Um, I, from the graphics too, it looks like you expect the splash pad to be fully accessible. So even if it's a person in a wheelchair, they can still access the park. Um, I think.
Yes.
I think that, that's fantastic, and I, I'm, I'm glad to see that as part of the design plan. And I also, uh, really like the fact that, um, there's not going to be a fee for folks to use it. I think, I think that really makes it, uh, uh, yet another jewel in the Huxley community. And the fact that people can come from outside and are still welcome to come and use the facility, um, just makes it that much, that much better. Um, I, I.
And doubling down on that with the location, um, in, in Huxley, it's perfect for the, the non-fee area.
I don't have any other questions.
I'd make a motion that we approve the $50,000 for the proposed splash pad, splash pad project, um, for the city of Huxley and have the fundings come out of lost.
Second, Headens.
Aye.
Faisal, aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to seeing that, uh, that project get started. Us too. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here, Jonathan. Next, we have discussion and consideration of purchase of a Kubota UTV from Bobcat of Ames for 100, I'm sorry, for $51,684 unbudgeted. Morning, Mike.
Good morning. I hope it's not 100 and something thousand dollars.
Had that CAT grant number in my head.
All right. Well, thank you for, uh, opportunity this morning to, to chat with you a little bit about this. We purchased this UTV, um, in 2018. It would have been FY19 year. We purchased it in 2018 and we got it specifically for, um, or I should say predominantly for work along trails. So the Tulk paved trails, um, Tedesco and Gorman Learning Corridor trails, that the new connector trail from, uh, the learning corridor to R38. Uh, and, uh, tri- and the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail. So those kind of specifically, um, and also McFarland Park, uh, trails that we have there. So, um, you know, the lion's share of this was for, again, for trail maintenance that, that this kind of machine gave us the operability that we hadn't had in the past. Uh, and so we moved forward with purchase again back in FY19. Machine worked, uh, worked well for us the first couple of years, and, uh, then we started having problems with it. Uh, and to date, we've spent, um, a little over 15,000 in repairs on it. And I know I realized this morning I didn't answer one of your questions yesterday about how long we've, it's been decommissioned. Uh, it has in that time, not counting the time that I have, um, dictated it's, um, out of service. It's been in the shop or down for repairs, probably about six or seven months during that time cumulatively. Uh, so it's a fair amount of time. And we have found this model has been discontinued. Uh, and have found that, uh, it's really known for, um, being underpowered, uh, for what's, what it is. We experienced lots of fuel system problems. Um, we've replaced glow plugs. We've replaced fuel injectors. And then the largest, uh, repair we've had in it is, uh, replacing the engine. It only has 300 hours of oper- of, uh, operation time on it, and that's a pretty small amount of hours. In, again, in doing some research, we found that, um, uh, we're not the only ones in this situation, that, that many other of these machines have had, had this similar problem. Uh, and had to go through multiple engine replacements. Um, the, we replaced the engine in March of this year. And at that point, put it on light duty, exceptionally light duty. Uh, and, uh, with the hope that we would be able to come forward and, uh, ask consideration for replacement of the machine. After we placed it on light duty, then we had another, um, need for repair. And at that point, we, uh, at that point, I said, no, there'll be no more operation of the machine until we get this juncture in this decision. So, um, that's where we stand right now. We'd like to replace it with a machine that, um, uh, that would, that would cost together with its attachments, would cost 51, 51,000, uh, and, uh, uh, and then sell the machine and attachments that we have with it because those attachments are specific to that machine. So we're, we would hope to get about 20,000 for the sale of the, uh, machine and attachments. So the net would be about 30,000, uh, 30,000 expense. So with that, you have any questions?
So I think you just answered one of my questions, is that the attachments would not fit on a new one. They're all.
Correct.
Two.
Correct.
One. And, um, I think my other question is, um, what work have you not been able to do since it's been down? Or, or what challenges you faced because it has been down?
Significantly. We, we haven't been able to broom, um, broom trails, sort of sweep trails. Uh, and that's really particularly important as we pave the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail at all of our gravel road crossings. So we really haven't been able to do that well. Uh, and, uh, so that's been a, a big, uh, a big, uh, impediment, if you will. And also then, this is kind of our machine that, that, uh, does a lot of our trail work, whether it be using the attachments or not. We, you know, use this machine to, um, to do all kinds, whether it be transporting people to do brush work, um, brush clearing or erosion or, or that kind of thing as well. We use this machine for that. Uh, and so now, you know, we haven't been able to do that. Uh, and so we've had to, uh, get in the waiting list for use of other machines and, uh, we don't, we don't have enough to go around.
Sure. And then I think my last question is, um, do you have any funds within your budget that you could put towards the cost of this at all as well?
We don't. I mean, we, what, I, I say we don't, and that's the, that's the, the easy answer. We may find at the end of the budget year that we've got the capacity. So we could look at it that way. Um, if we have the capacity, so we may be able to handle it on a potential amendment basis. Um, and we'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
Um, but we don't have any funds specifically designated for it.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess, um, kind of on the budget that, what surprised me was it seems like a significant tool that if you've been having issues with it for so long, that it didn't come up when we were working on the budget.
Yeah. So that. Fair, fair question. We didn't have the engine problems until after we had the budget re, uh, adopted. Or at least we were past our work session when, when that raised its head.
Was there a warranty on the machine when we bought it?
There was, and that's been, you know, that's expired. Um, and I think that was a two-year warranty.
And then, so the engine has been replaced, but, um, but it's still having, these are different problems outside of the.
It's mostly, like it says, mostly fuel system problems.
Okay.
Uh, those are causing it. Um, and, uh, you know, I think that's why they discontinued it. But yeah, so we, we replaced the engine and then not long later, we had to spend another, um, I think it was $700 on future, on other repairs. And at that point is when I said that we're just going to quit operating this machine. Um, prior to replacing that engine, and that engine was about $8,000 expenditure. Prior to replacing that, I think the largest expenditure was, was the fuel injectors, uh, and that was $3,500. And that was in '21.
Okay.
So we went from '21 to '22, '23. You know, we, we did have to do several other repairs, but nothing big like that. Replace U-joints, which you shouldn't have to replace U-joints in a machine of that many hours, um, and several other things.
Um, one last question. Um, when, in my email, when you were, um, addressing the attachment question, um, you said that the 14,807, that would be for the attachments, was included in the total request and as it was competed as a group. So does that mean, can you tell me what competed as a group?
When we asked for quotes.
Okay.
So when we asked for quotes, we specified the machine plus the attachments.
Okay.
As, as one unit or as one group.
And were there other machines that you looked, that you considered?
There were. There were, uh, two others. One was a, a Bobcat, uh, machine. A Bobcat's called a Tool Cat. Uh, the machine itself was, um, let me see, I have that right here. 60, 60,000 plus for the machine only without the attachments. 69.5. And the other machine that we looked at was a Ventrack. It's called a Ventrack machine. That machine only was, um, 31,000, but it did not meet our specifications. So we were, we were quoted that, um, by a vendor, but, uh, when we looked at the machine, it didn't meet the specifications.
And what were the specifications?
Oh, golly.
I mean, just kind of in a nutshell, I, I just, I, I guess for, for future, um, it would be helpful in the request itself to just have a little more information than what it felt like we had here because it's, it left me with a lot of questions and, um, just feeling like, um, if we, if we could have a little more insight on the work that you did leading up to the request so that.
Sure.
Then we're not.
Right. Um, so I, I'm just going to highlight some of these specifications. Um, turf tires, diesel motor, liquid cooled motor, uh, front hydraulic and front PTO. Uh, cab, power steering, four-wheel drive, locking differential. And then the attachments and a cargo dump bed. So pretty straightforward, but, um, I think where that other machine didn't, didn't meet spec was in the, uh, hydraulic and PTO attachment.
And this Ventrack or whatever, that does not, that 31,000 did not include the attachment.
Correct. That's just the machine. Yep.
Thank you, Mike. I don't, I don't have any other questions.
One thing I'll note too on that Tool Cat I mentioned, I see in the notes here that that, that was the higher-priced quote. Um, 69.5 for a Bobcat Tool Cat machine, and that was a, that's a used machine.
Okay.
And again, the machine only.
Yeah, and this, the one you're requesting, if I'm looking at it, would have been around 48, or not 48, um, about 37, and then you add the 14 for the attachments.
Correct.
And it's brand new.
Correct. Correct.
And does it have a warranty option?
Yes, that does come with a warranty.
Any other questions?
I do not have any other questions. I'd make a motion to approve the purchase of a Kubota UTV from Bobcat of Ames for $51,684. Um, that would be new with the warranty. Um, and then I would also add that if there is money left over in the, um, conservation budget, that amendment be used to help cover the costs, some of the costs.
I would second. Headens.
Aye.
Faisal, aye.
Very good. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks. Appreciate you answering all the questions that we had. Okay, moving to departmental reports, we have Integrated Roadside Vegetation Management Quarterly Report, and it looks like we had a report submitted electronically. Um, so, thank you for that, Joe. Moving to other reports, no other reports, any upcoming agenda items?
Not at this particular time?
Okay. Now it's time for public comment number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda, the board may not take any action due to, uh, requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the table. And seeing no one raise their hand or step forward, we'll close public comment number two and move to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates, and announcements from the supervisors.
I have a little bit lighter of a week. Um, I'm going to be with environmental health at least tomorrow morning. Uh, Thursday, I've got KHI radio, um, and then I have the department head elected officials meeting in the afternoon, and then I have the, um, uh, meeting with Nevada at 4:00 PM. Friday, I have a discussion with Aaron, and then I had the courtroom technology meeting afterwards.
Um, today I have a NACO Central Committee meeting, um, Housing Trust meeting, there's an event at ISU that I was, um, going to stop in at, uh, and I can't remember the name of the, um, department, but, um, just having an open house, so I'm going to stop in at an open house at Iowa State. Um, tomorrow morning, I have a planning meeting for women in leadership and, um, the department had an elected officials on Thursday. Um, Thursday evening, I'm going to be over at Food at First. Friday morning, um, have just a couple meetings, um, around here, and then, um, I may not be making it, I don't think I'm going to make it to the courtroom inspection one because I had a scan leadership team meeting.
Okay.
Set in right after, so, and that's in Ames. And then that, that is that for this week. Anything further?
I move adjourn.
Second, uh, Hiddens.
Aye.
Faisal, aye, we're adjourned, thank you.